Good evening. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is June 11th, 2024. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. We gather here today to serve our community with integrity and dedication. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as we make decisions that impact the lives of those we represent, grant us clarity, compassion, and collaboration in our discussions. We are grateful for this opportunity to serve, and we trust in your presence among us. I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator, Mike Soprone. Mike, thanks for your assistance, and I have to share with you, you may already know this, your mother introduced herself to me today in the grocery store. And she says, "My son will see you there tonight." I said, "Well, who is your son?" And she said, "I'll give you a clue. You see him twice a month, and you always introduce him." So I thought for a minute, and went, "That's Mike." Anyway, that's our TV operator. Thanks for your assistance. Say hi to mom. I would like to call on Mrs. Fisher for a motion to approve the minutes from the May 28th council meeting and workshop.
Your Honor, I have reviewed both the minutes for workshop and council, and I do find them orderable, and I move for approval.
Second.
I'm staying.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
I'm staying.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. Okay. We have one proclamation to present this evening. I'm going to ask Mr. Suddeth to read that, and this is for Juneteenth.
As the council liaison to the Board of Community Relations, it's my honor to offer this proclamation that reads the following: Whereas Juneteenth is a day dedicated to recognize, reflect, and confront the shameful legacy of systematic racism within our country; and whereas on June 19th, 1865, enslaved Americans in Galveston, Texas, were informed that in accordance with a proclamation from President Abraham Lincoln, all slaves are freed from bondage; and whereas more than two years had passed before the news reached African-Americans living in Galveston, Texas, that slavery had been abolished; and whereas the following year, the first official Juneteenth celebration took place in Texas and has continued throughout the United States; and whereas in celebration of freedom, Juneteenth is a day that should be recognized by all Americans; and whereas the Kettering community will be commemorating the city's third annual Juneteenth celebration on Wednesday, June 19th, 2024, at the Lincoln Park Civic Commons. This event will feature live music, food trucks, local vendors, and children's activities; and whereas the meaning behind Juneteenth will continue to have a profound effect, profound impact in the Kettering community as we work towards shared freedoms for all persons. I therefore, on behalf of Peggy Laner, Mayor of the City of Kettering, and the City Council and the community, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2024, to be Juneteenth Day here in our city, Kettering, Ohio, and encourage all residents to commemorate the past but to also work toward a better future for tomorrow.
Thank you very much, and we certainly do encourage our residents to attend that if we possibly can. We do have a written proclamation here, and I'd ask that you pass that on to the Board of Community Relations. Thank you, Mr. Suddeth. Okay, we have no public hearings this evening. If anyone wishes to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda, please, you may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comment should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to address council tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will now move on to ordinances and second reading. I'd ask Mrs. Fisher to introduce first legislation.
Your Honor, I do have an ordinance to provide for the Table of Organization Position Classification Plan, Compensation Plan, and Pay Schedules and Rules and Regulations pertaining to the conditions of work and supplemental benefits for the employees of the City of Kettering, Ohio, and to repeal the ordinance number 4404-23. It's requested by the Human Resources Department, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson, do you have any comments?
Yes, Your Honor. This ordinance does several things. The City Council had previously approved a 2024 general pay increase of 2.25% for non-unionized regular full-time and regular part-time employees. This personnel ordinance provides for a retroactive adjustment to these employees' pay to equal a total pay increase of, for 2024, of 3.5%. This will match the increase granted to employees represented by the Kettering FOP Lodge 92 for 2024. Additionally, it, there's a position of Traffic Control 3 that's no longer in active position. It's been removed to match the contract related to the Department of Public Service Streets Division. And in relation to the Office of the Clerk of Council, the pay grade now references Section 412, and new language of Section 412 has been placed to have the clerk's compensation set by a separate resolution. Additionally, it provides a procedure for the mayor or the city manager to appoint an acting clerk to perform the clerk's duties in the clerk's absence or disability. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance to amend Chapter 947 of the codified ordinances regarding street lighting assessment procedure. This is requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Okay, it's moved and seconded. Mr. Grayson?
I'm going to ask Mr. Bergstrasser to cover this one.
Thank you. This proposed ordinance would amend Chapter 947 of the city's codified ordinances, and this particular chapter of our codified ordinances is relating to street lighting assessment processes and procedures. The current code, which was passed in, well, all the way back in 1982, back when we had several newspapers of general circulation within the city, the previous requirement required quite extensive and costly newspaper postings and certified mailings to affected property owners. So given the fact that the cost to meet these requirements has steadily risen over the years, and the number of newspapers in town has dwindled significantly, we are proposing amendments to this chapter that will permit posting of information on the city website in place of newspaper notification for three of our four processes within the street lighting assessments, and also will increase the notification limit from $300 to $500. So those folks that have assessment, annual assessments over $500, we would notify those individual property owners, which reduces the overall number of property owners that we have to mail the notice. So staff is recommending the approval of this ordinance, and I will mention one other thing is that these changes will not change the assessment fees that are levied to property owners on an annual basis. That is covered under separate legislation. We happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, I am hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. Okay. I'm going to just take a second to interrupt the agenda here as scheduled because I realize that I neglected to welcome Mrs. Hazel as our new Clerk of Council. She was sitting right there last week, but I suddenly went, "No, this is her first week in the chair," so.
Thank you.
We're certainly happy to have you, and welcome, and your job is to nudge me and say, "You forgot me." I knew you weren't good to do that.
Thank you, Mayor.
So we will now move on to the third item on our agenda, our ordinance.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance to amend the traffic control map and the traffic control file of the City of Kettering to show the installation of traffic signs on various city streets in the City of Kettering, Ohio. This is being requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergstrasser?
Thank you, Your Honor. This proposed ordinance would enact a no parking any time zone on display lane from about 800, excuse me, 580 feet north of East David Road, all along the northeast side of the cul-de-sac for display lane. This is, for point of reference, this is basically across the street from Skate World and the trails, miniature golf. This is in response to some concerns that have been expressed by business owners in that display lane area where delivery trucks have difficulty accessing the businesses at 4250 Display Lane when we have vehicles parked on both sides of the road. So again, this would enact a no parking zone to alleviate those traffic concerns. Staff is recommending approval. We happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance to amend the traffic control map and the traffic control file of the City of Kettering to show the installation of traffic signs on various city streets in the City of Kettering, Ohio. This is requested by the Engineering Department, and I do move for approval.
Second. Mr. Bergstrasser?
Thank you, Your Honor. Similar to the previous ordinance, this one will enact a fire lane no parking zone on the west side of Isaac Prue Way, essentially along the frontage of 694 Isaac Prue Way, which is one of the retirement centers, basically at the northwest corner of Isaac Prue Way and Lincoln Park Boulevard. This came out of a request from the Fire Department, who has had some difficulty with parked cars in this area when they're trying to make emergency calls to the retirement center. We're recommending approval, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
That concludes our ordinances in second reading. We'll now move on to resolutions. Ms. DuVall?
Sorry, I had a little jumpstart there. I have a resolution authorizing acceptance of a donation from the Community Foundation for Kettering. The estimated cost is $1,500. This is requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second. Okay, Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. One of our cherished summertime events are the hot dog roasts put on by Partners for Healthy Youth, and as you know, Partners for Healthy Youth is a joint effort between the schools and the city. This year, the Community Foundation for Kettering has offered to donate $1,500 to support those community hot dog roasts.
Great. Hot dog season. Okay, any questions? All right, call the roll.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to amend Resolution 10990-24 regarding equipment purchases. It's an estimated cost of $110,000, the same as the amount budgeted, and this is requested by the Finance Department. I do move for approval.
Second.
Okay, and Mr. Grayson? No, Mr. Bergstrasser?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will amend a previous resolution that was passed earlier this year regarding capital equipment purchases. We recently had a Parks Maintenance Vehicle that had to be taken out of service due to the condition of the vehicle, and which necessitated a change in what we planned to purchase for the Parks Maintenance Division. So instead of purchasing two crew cab trucks this year, we will instead purchase one crew cab and one SUV, which will function as a supervisor vehicle. The vehicle that was taken out of service was a previous supervisor vehicle that had quite a bit of age on it. So this resolution tonight will amend the previous resolution to reflect what we intend to purchase. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with the Kleinger's Group for the purchase of design services. The estimated cost is $44,400, no budget, requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bergstrasser?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution would allow the city to contract with the Kleinger's Group for landscape design services within the area of Governor's Place Boulevard. So if you think of Governor's Place, we have that highly landscaped area, median area between the northbound and southbound lanes of Governor's Place Boulevard. We are putting a project together to hopefully go up for bids later this year that would make major improvements to not only the island area with new and improved landscaping, but also a fair amount, considerable amount actually, of concrete repair work, upgraded street lighting, and ADA curb ramp repairs and repaving within Governor's Place. We have a tax increment financing district within Governor's Place that ends in 2030, I believe. We need to continue spending funds out of that TIF district so that we can continue the TIF and show good progress towards completing that, the timing of the TIF. So we are working on putting a project together right now. We'll come back to you later here this summer to give you a more comprehensive look on what the improvements will look like. But in order to get the ball rolling on the landscape design, we need to contract with Kleinger's now, who we've had very good experience with on several recent projects, including work out here at Civic Commons, Lincoln Park. They also redesigned the landscape improvements in the Kettering Business Park and the main entry, so very good track record with them. Strongly recommend that they be awarded this project, and we also, as I mentioned, plan to come back to you later this summer with a more comprehensive look on what this project would look like. I know those lots, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have questions? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the replacement of HVAC equipment at the Frays Pavilion. The estimated cost and the amount budgeted is $175,000, and this is requested by the Public Service Department. I move for approval.
Second. Okay, let's see. Mr. Bergstrasser?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow the city to contract for the replacement of the existing HVAC, air conditioning, and heating systems within the Frays Pavilion building itself. We are budgeting $175,000 to replace the system that will bring it up to more modern standards and match other units that are in and around the city, and also allow the city staff to have more individual control over the HVAC within the Pavilion itself. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with AT&amp;T for the purchase of an upgrade to the Vesta 911 system. The estimated cost is $82,429.96, and the amount budgeted is zero, and this is being requested by the Police Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. The Vesta 911 system provided by AT&amp;T is our 911 call handling system. It's an integral part of our communication system and its, our center and its operations, and it is needed to be upgraded, both for the hardware and software, to maintain our current high level of operations. One of the things that I should highlight with you is we kind of have to do this in tandem with other organizations that are partners with us. Our partner organizations include Oakwood, Centerville, and Centerville, and so they are doing similar upgrades to their 911 system at the same time. E911 funds will be used for this project, and I invite the chief to add anything he'd like.
Only that Moraine is also included in the cities.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution accepting the National Opioid Litigation Settlement with the Kroger Company as negotiated through the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding. This is requested by the Law Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. I'm going to summarize this and invite Mr. Hamer to add any additions or corrections that he might. You've approved a number of these settlements where the Ohio Attorney General's Office on behalf of many organizations under the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding have negotiated settlements with companies that have been sued as a result of their actions during the opioid epidemic. And so in this case, you would be improving settlement terms with the Kroger Company, and we'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Grayson. I would just add that at this time, it's difficult to know how much the city would receive under the settlement because it depends on how many other communities participate. But notwithstanding that, we still recommend approval. Thank you.
Okay, anyone have any questions or comments? All right, call the roll.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept additional grant funds on behalf of the Kettering Municipal Court from the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction. The estimated cost is $350. This is requested by both Judge Long and Judge Dressel, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson?
Yes, this is a relatively small grant of $350 to support training from the courts, from the Bureau of Community Sanctions is the, in the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction is the funding agency, and essentially, this grant program helps fund training in probation departments and community-based correction facilities throughout Ohio with the goal of adopting policies and practices that reduce the number of offenders on probation supervision who violate the conditions of their supervision. We recommend approval.
Okay, any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Kettering, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st of 2024. The estimated cost is $128,750 with zero budgeted. It is requested by the Finance Department, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. These are the supplemental appropriations related to all of the items that you just approved that had an appropriation. So it includes the $1,500 from the Community Foundation, where we need, you accepted the funds, now we need to appropriate them, the $82,500 for the dispatch Vesta 911 system upgrade, the $350 for the courts training, and the $44,400 for design services at the Governor's Place Boulevard, streetscape area. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. That concludes our resolutions for this evening. We have one ordinance in first reading.
It's an emergency.
Emergency.
It's an emergency.
Okay. Your Honor, I have an emergency ordinance extending the moratorium on adult-use cannabis operators within the City of Kettering, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is requested by the Law Department, and I move for appro, no, I don't move for approval. I do move for approval. It's an emergency. I move for approval.
Second. And Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. Let's, this is an ordinance in first reading, but it's being recommended to be adopted by emergency. So what that means is that it will, there will be no second reading, it'll go into effect immediately. You extended the moratorium on a, this ordinance extends the moratorium on adult-use cannabis operators within the City of Kettering, and you may recall that on November 28th, 2023, you passed an ordinance imposing a nine-month moratorium on commercial cultivation, processing, and dispensing of recreational cannabis marijuana within the city in order to give time for research on the potential effects of allowing commercial cannabis in the city and to review the state's commercial cannabis statutes and administrative rules and consider changes to the city's codified ordinances. Currently, the state's administrative rules are not finalized. There are bills pending in the Ohio General Assembly that if enacted could change the commercial cannabis statutes and may require changes to state administrative rules, and as a result, an extension of the moratorium is needed to give the city time to assess the state statutes and administrative rules once they're finalized and determine how we may want to modify our codified ordinances, draft proposed changes, present them to council. So this ordinance contemplates an extension of the moratorium specifically to extend it to the end of June, June 30th, 2025. Mr. Hamer, would you like to add anything?
Staff would recommend approval for the reasons that Mr. Greason enunciated. Thank you.
Okay, anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
No.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Okay, that is the end of our legislation for this evening. Do we have any certifications and petitions, Mrs. Hazel?
Your Honor, we have no certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, thank you. We will move now to our managers' report and community update.
Thank you, Your Honor. We want to highlight the Neighborhood Pride Awards and encourage people to take a moment to nominate a neighbor, a business, themselves, or any Kettering resident that you think is deserving of a Neighborhood Pride Award. The information on how you can nominate somebody is online. Certainly, you can email our volunteer administrator or contact us at the Government Center. Submission form was also included in the summer edition of Contact with Kettering, and the deadline is August 1st. If you are thinking about planning a neighborhood block party, we certainly encourage it. It's a great way to get together with your neighbors and build a sense of neighborhood pride and when available, representatives of the police and fire department stop by to say hello. Our Board of Community Relations provides certificates for ice cream. So we want to encourage neighborhood block parties as a way to make Kettering a great place to call home. Information is available on our website or by contacting the Engineering Department. Have a neighborhood block party. Mr. Suddeth read the proclamation for Juneteenth, but I wanted to highlight the city offices will be closed Wednesday, June 19th, and observance of Juneteenth. Because of that closure, the offices will be closed, but there'll be no delay in Rumpke Trash Service. There are two celebrations that I think we've highlighted previously. The first at Rosewood Arts Center on the June 18th from 5:00 to 8:00, and the second will be held at Lincoln Park Civic Commons on June 19th from 5:00 to 8:00. We certainly encourage every resident to attend. And you'll begin hearing about Spasnocht. It will take place Wednesday, June 26th, 5:30 to 9:30 at Fraser Pavilion. And I just want to say thanks to both our Board of Community Relations on the Juneteenth, program activities, and our Sister Cities organization for their efforts around Spasnocht. Two great groups of citizens that are helping celebrate things in Kettering this summer. We appreciate it.
Does anyone else feel like someone should make a joke about the rain on Spasnocht since Mr. Kleep has isn't here?
Feel free.
I'm being quiet. I'm the rep, and I'm just quiet.
Last year, the sun was bright and beautiful. We broke that curse. Okay. At this time, if you would like to come speak before City Council, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak to council?
Yes.
Yes, we do have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a question as to how some things are operated in the city about the repair of curbs. I am a homeowner that I've owned a home for 48 years. I live on a corner. I've had a Neighborhood Pride Award three times for my home, but the curbs have all tore out, and they were torn out by a snowplow driver three years ago. And I just, about three weeks ago, got someone out to even look at it, but then he tells me it's my responsibility to replace this curb that a city employee tore out with a snowplow. I don't know, I just don't understand how that's my responsibility to replace that. I certainly haven't had any Neighborhood Pride Awards with the way it looks now. In fact, I have a sister that lives on the same street I do, and she's had seven awards. So it's a family thing, I guess, with us. But we love our city here in Kettering. And my daughter bought a home, it was two years ago, over on Glen Heath, and had a lady there that people had complained about, talking to the old people in the neighborhood. Seventeen years, these people had filed complaints against this lady. And she's actually a school teacher in the Fairmont School District that would not clean up anything, would not do anything. So as a result, after having people out there to talk to them, they said all they can do is issue her letters. She ignored the letters. She did everything. But I want to commend one person here tonight for what he did, because I made a personal phone call to your city manager last year. He assured me he would take care of that. He not only took care of it, he showed up the next morning with a crew to clean that place up over there. So I want to thank you very much for what you did. You're a good person, you're a good man. But I just wanted to see if someone could explain to me why that's my responsibility? Because financially, I certainly can't do it. I have a wife who's terminally ill with cancer, I can barely buy medications for her, let alone replace curbs. I've been planning on coming here to ask this question for a long time, but...
Before I attempt to respond to your question, could you give us your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
My name is Ralph Haynes, H-A-Y-N-E-S, 2949 East Cunningham Lane. That's on the corner of Cunningham and Powhatan.
Thank you. I can't begin to explain it. However, Mr. Greason, who you know...
Okay.
Perhaps after the meeting, could sit down with you and go over? Is that okay? Or did you want to make some public statement?
Yeah, one of us would be glad to discuss it with you and cover, talk about it.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. And thanks for keeping your yard up straight. I've spent the last three days weeding, so if anyone wants to nominate me, I'll get some reward for it. Let's go to the City Council Report and start with Mrs. Fisher.
Okay. So ma'am, it's been a very busy couple of weeks for myself. I've had an opportunity for 16 different opportunities to represent the city, and so I'm going to apologize to my teammates that the ones I'm going to cover are, I think I was the only one there. First being, I did stop by the STEM Spring Exhibition, and I will tell you, I came in the wrong door, and it was horrendously crowded with all the kids showing all their projects. And the first thing that hit me when I walked through the door was a sign that said, "How do I fix Kettering Recs Park?" Then I moved to the next display, and it says, "My intent is to redesign part of Indian Riffle Disc Golf Course and to make it more player-friendly and resident-friendly while still trying to use as many of the old tee pads and holes as possible." I bring that up because what a wonderful thing that this school is doing, and they're getting involved in things that they see that might need some improvements, and instead of just complaining about it, they're coming up with some solutions. And I pray that they're sharing those with our Parks and Recs, so that way, we can try to come up with maybe new ways to do things that are economical and that make the win-win in our city. And so just uplift those kids and the fantastic work they're doing. Likewise, I accidentally got to my class a little bit early last Monday, a week ago Monday, and it was our first day of camps at the rec. And I was walking around the circle, and all the kids were gathering in the gym, and I saw several of the new counselors engaging with our youth in the camps. And, you know, quiet ones that were in the corner brought them out, kids that wanted to throw the football, et cetera. And so what a great opportunity for some of our youth to be paid to play. I mean, what a great job. And so again, uplift our Parks and Recs for having that opportunity for a lot of our, I'll call it, high school kids to get some good summer cash. I did go to the Kettering Forward Foundation golf outing, and sorry, Bob, I'm still in your shop, Kettering, but we have some wonderful, and I'm just going to rattle off a few of the businesses that put money into this particular golf outing, like Regal Financial, some places that we go to sometimes, Submarine House, Buffalo Wild Wings, Personal Tronies. We're all sponsors for this particular golf outing. And some great small businesses like Tannenberg, Pet Resort, Berlawn Insurance. And we even had some residents that put some money up, like the Duttons, to be sponsors for the Kettering Forward Foundation. So I just pull a few of those out there to say, we have a great community that rallies around some of our nonprofits and puts, you know, puts money in great beliefs. Sorry again, I'm sorry this is long, but I was the only one at some of these things. I did get to participate with Steve in our Streets Department this week. I got to clean some of our Kettering roads. And I will tell you, for anybody that's ever been in a street cleaning machine, he was pushing the accelerator, he was pushing the brake, and he was looking straight ahead while I was just trying to focus on getting that dag on brush next to the curb. And if anybody went behind me, and I just did a little bit of a boulevard, it would look like I was a drunk because I cleaned it good, and then I didn't clean it, and then I cleaned it good, and I got too close, and wow, the skill set. So public service announcement. Do not go around our big trucks that are cleaning streets, because we had somebody come around and cut us off making a right-hand turn. And this was a huge truck that we happened to see, but while he's trying to drive the truck and nobody else is in the passenger seat, you could miss a car flying around. So public service announcement to our residents, there's flashing lights everywhere, you had to see it, do not go around those trucks. Last but not least, today, I got to represent the city on a C-17 flight as a community leader, and what an awesome and priceless opportunity to participate in that with the new commander of the 445th, Colonel Perry, where I went to his ribbon, or his change of command this past week as well. So those are my few that I think I was the only one at. Sorry, it was long. It's a shame.
Can I, like, try to drive a snowplow this winter? Am I allowed to do that?
Yes, you do. We don't get to drive it, you get to ride it.
Oh, okay.
But you were pushing the brush.
I got to push the brush.
Yeah. I just have a quick report. I was, I'm sure many of you are going to talk about the Gentilly Park, so I was not there, and I was heartbroken, I couldn't make it, I was out of town. But I took my three daughters this morning, and it was packed on a Tuesday morning. I mean, and it was an amazing park. It's my daughter's new favorite. So just wanted to say it is being used, and people are excited about it. That's it for me.
I enjoyed being at the retirement party for Mary Beth and seeing a lot of council members and city managers who were there long before I was, celebrating her and the amazing first-class parks that she has a legacy of helping create here in Kettering. We went to the Splash, what's it called in the Kettering Rec Center? The Splash Pad, the water park, and my kids just love that, and it's always packed. And want to just give a shout out to her and the previous councils for making that happen, because it's a real asset to our community. And she also worked hard on getting Gentilly Park open for many, many years, and also has had a big hand in summer feeding that started. Kettering works with the schools to do a kid's summer food program for lunches while school's out during the summer through Partners for Healthy Youth. That is going on and still needs volunteers if people would like to help with that. And Mary Beth had a hand in all that. And also read this week that Kettering house prices, which were 10 years ago, $106,750 was the median, are now $225,000 is the median. So great news for homeowners, and what a great place to live to build equity in their house, in their, build equity. And really appreciate the staff in the city looking at creative ways to add even more market-rate houses, as we were talking about earlier tonight. And want to commend BCR and Brian and Lisa for their Juneteenth celebration coming up. It's such a top-notch part of what they do with Board of Community Relations. And Lisa being that you helped to get that going, and Brian is currently serving and helping to make it happen. And fortunately, I'm going to be at a family reunion, but it's a great thing to attend and hope people go. That's it.
I want to welcome Amy Haslip as our new Clerk of Council, and her first was a job well done, so thank you so much. Shane talked about Gentilly Park. I'm going to talk about another park in Kettering. Delco Park, this past Saturday, held the annual Doorwood Optimist Fishing Derby. We had 413 fisher kids out there and adults, fed them lunch. And for the statisticians out there, the largest fish caught was 17 pounds.
Wow.
And the most fish caught by any one individual was 20. So it doesn't matter the size, it's the number. So again, it's a great event put on by Doorwood Optimists. And a lot of youth that were there were brought in that wouldn't not necessarily get an opportunity to go to a park and fish. So it's very well-received, and a lot of these kids were very appreciative of it. Many of them, it was their first time holding a fishing pole.
So this was my first time going to the fishing derby since I've lived in Kettering. And I went, and Bill Lauder from School Board and former council member, he made me look at worms. I didn't appreciate that, but that was a very cool event, and I'm glad I went. Gentilly Park, the opening was so great, but I want to talk about something a little different about Gentilly Park. A friend of mine took her 10-year-old daughter over there. They couldn't attend the opening, so they went a little later in the day. And she sent me a picture, and she said, "Why do the tables look weird? Why do the picnic tables look weird?" And I'm like, "What?" And so I look at the picture, and I realize it's, they're handicap accessible. And how great is that? It's those little touches that are throughout that park that really make a difference and make it accessible for everyone. And it's fantastic. And once I explained it, she was happy, so. We also had the block party, what, two weeks ago? It feels like it's been forever. That is always so much fun. It's one of my favorite things every year, because as council, we just get to walk around and pass around, pass out ice cream, and everybody likes us. And I think for the second or third year in a row, Mr. Scott and I both snuck off our hot dogs around the same time, so that's always fun.
You got to feed your workers.
Exactly.
At the park. Let's just clarify that. Leave the park.
No, we didn't leave the park. We got there, yeah. I also want to welcome Amy Haslip. I have had the joy of working with Amy for years now because of BCR and everything, and she is just fabulous, and I'm thrilled to have her up here. Welcome. And one last thing, we have about a week left for applications for the Kettering Leadership Academy. Very excited about this year. Don Kirchner, Lindsey Curry, and myself have been working on some improvements, some ways to make it more fresh and, you know, change it up a little bit. And I would love to get a few more applications in before the deadline, so it's on the website. It's a great program, well worth your time. Thanks.
So I just want to quickly just echo the comments about the block party, just a great time to see everybody out there. But also, this week, my neighborhood Kroger wrapped up what seems like a forever-long transformation of the store on Stroop. And so that was just really fun to be a part of that event and see the staff. And whoever thought that you'd get to sing the National Anthem by the Organic Strawberries? So it's a first for everything. We did that. Yeah, and on the record with the Juneteenth, Jill, I appreciate your comments, but I've had nothing to do with this. Like, the BCR is full of some committed volunteers and staff members who have really made this specific event a jewel in the crown of Kettering that we've come together as a community to honor this holiday. And it's only third year, it's really impressive to see what the volunteers and staff have done to grow this event and expand the reach and the footprint and the number of citizens that are going to enjoy this celebration next week. So I literally have done nothing but just listen and support to watch just the fruits of the last three years of work come together as this gets bigger, bigger every year. And it's really a draw from outside of our city, and I think it's just a real, it's something the city should be proud of, again, as a way that we're being a leader in the region and attracting folks from all over to this event Wednesday. That's all I have. It's been busy, but I've been to the events that these other guys have been to, and I'm so thankful for our parks. Like, my oldest son lives out of city, he's a fisherman, he took me to Lincoln Park and taught me how to cast his new reel. I know nothing about fishing, but now my adult son's teaching me. And then my youngest, who is also an adult, we were at Gentilly checking out the equipment, and it's kind of fun to watch your six-foot-three child try to swing on a swing at his age. But we just love that park and love that neighborhood, and it's just really neat to see that addition to our park properties.
I would have loved to have seen him on the zip line. I bet his feet were dragging.
You know, there was a line for the zip line on Sunday night at 8:00, so we did not wait in line for the zip line.
Wow, wow. Well, as you can tell, this has been a busy couple of weeks here in the city of Kettering. A great time to be a resident or a visitor. There's nothing like that fishing derby where the entire lake is completely surrounded by kids. I just, that's my favorite. We had some sad goodbyes this week, as someone mentioned. We had a farewell for Mary Beth Odell, who's been our Parks We had a farewell for Mary Beth Odell, who's been our Parks and Rec Director for the last 27 years. And we hate to see her leave, but I have a feeling she'll be around a bit. We also said goodbye today to Bruce Abrams, a member of our police force. Bruce finished up 30-year career here in Kettering. So, great people in this community, lots of wonderful things to do. Just can't say enough about this city. So, thank you, and that basically concludes our business this evening. Our next regularly scheduled City Council meeting will be June 25th, 2024, and this meeting is adjourned.